At this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order. We welcome you this evening. We have with us Pastor Michael McGill from the Grace Place Christian Church to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you this evening and we give you glory. We thank you for such a wonderful day that you've made and we thank you for your goodness, your goodness even to the city of Hope Mills. And Father, on this evening, our prayer is that as these civic officials go about the business of this town, God, our prayer on tonight is that you will lead them and guide them, fill them with your wisdom, God, and let everything that's done here on tonight be such that reflects your heart and your character. Father, we thank you for all that you have, that you continue to do on the behalf of this great city and we're just confident that your wisdom will guide these leaders into decisions that will further benefit this town. So at this time, Father, I just pray your blessing upon each of them, upon the mayor and upon this board of commissioners. And we thank you for the work that shall be accomplished, that it will be such that brings glory to your name. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions from our agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, got an addition of a closed session. Meet within attorney-client privilege regarding the parking lot at the golf course under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1183. Anybody has anything else, motion to approve with that addition?
All those in...
Was that a motion?
Yes, that was his. He made the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of another closed session. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. First item on our agenda this evening is presentations and I'll turn this over to Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell. He is our liaison on our Historical Preservation Commission and that is the commission that actually came up with and made the award, the Pat Calder Award. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem for that presentation at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been giving out this award from the Historical Preservation Commission for probably about five or six years, close to, by the recommendation of Mr. Lawrence Smith, recognizing Mr. Pat Calder's contribution to society, showman of great sportsmanship off the field as well as on the field. This year, we have, we're recognizing two recipients. I don't know, is the family or is Mr. Caleb Holland here tonight? Okay, very good. Mr. Caleb Holland will be receiving our 2018 award and Mr. Jacob Sports will be receiving the 2019 award. To qualify for this, there has to be a recommendation from either a coach, teacher, pastor, mentor. Must be signed by the individual recommending and including phone number, of course. They must provide a personal essay of 150 words or less. And then, of course, as I mentioned, must show good sportsmanship, character, leadership, be a team player. And they must have played at least one year of baseball through the Hope Mills Parks and Rec Department. And I think they try to select players that are on their last year of ball here in the Parks and Rec Department. And if I may, if you'll bear with me, some of this is in the agenda packet, but Caleb is the recipient of the 2018 award. I'm just gonna read their essays. I think they're excellent essays. Caleb wrote, "My name is Caleb Holland. Most people know me by Pee-wee. I've been playing baseball since the age of six. I started playing in Hope Mills rec ball at age nine. I love the game of baseball and respect the game. I am a sound fundamental player who shows respect and leadership to my teammates as well as other players. I always strive to succeed and always give 100% every game, every practice. I always show respect to my coaches as well as the umpires and my teammates. I try to be a good leader at all times. I practice every chance I get to push myself to be the best I can be. I always strive to do the right thing in difficult situations. I deserve this award for my hard work and dedication to the game and the love of baseball." This next one from Jacob is very touching, very emotional. It's good testimony for our youth. Jacob wrote, "Baseball has been a major part of my life since I was five years old and has helped to mold my character on and off the field. Being awarded a Pat Calder Award would be prestigious, a prestigious honor to any baseball player. One personal life lesson I learned through baseball was life isn't fair. In 2014, I was diagnosed with Chiari malformation. I continued to take direction, work hard for my favorite position, and encourage my teammates while fighting excruciating headaches. On November 16th, 2016, as I was being wheeled into brain surgery, I was thanking God for the talent he blessed me with and at the same time begging him not to take it away from me. When I returned to playing several months later, I was forced to use the lessons of dealing with failure. It was hard but humbling. I found myself needing the same encouragement I had given to others over the years. Baseball also taught me being a leader isn't just something you do on the field, it's everything else you do in all areas. This is why I volunteer at the animal shelter, donate splitwood to those in need, purchase meals for police officers in line near us, and care bags for the homeless. My humbling experiences have helped me to understand everything happens for a purpose and your integrity says more about you than words ever will." And he said, "Thank you, Pat Calder, the Town of Hope Mills, Coach Lemaker, Coach Bob, Coach Laura, Coach Robbie, Coach Shane, and Coach Richard for giving me the opportunity to play and learn life through the best sport ever. I will forever cherish the memories of playing baseball in Hope Mills." And we also got a recommendation letter here from Blake Maxwell for Jacob. So let's see, I don't think we have anybody from the stor... Lisa's writing an article, so I guess I won't call her up, but does anybody else here from Historical Preservation Commission? If I can have maybe Commissioner Leg come down and help me present the award? Caleb, would you come up with your name?
Be careful in the face, I'll move around. We're gonna fight it, does not glue in.
That's what he's modeling, boy. Thank you. Appreciate having you here. Anything you want to say?
Congratulations.
And they also got participated in the Fourth of July parade as the grand marshal.
He said, "This is the World Series here."
Congratulations to these, both these young men. Baseball is truly Hope Mills and we appreciate the family members that are here tonight celebrating these two young men. Congratulations to both of you. Best wishes for the rest of this year as far as what you're doing. Thank you. At this time, I have a special proclamation and this is recognized in Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas on average, 20 active-duty service members, veterans and members of the National Garden Reserve die by suicide each day, many of whom have risked their lives to protect our freedom while deployed, often multiple times to areas of prolonged conflict. Whereas rates for our country's first responders are approximately 20% higher than that of the general public. And throughout the general public and nationally, there's a suicide attempt every 28 seconds. Whereas suicide is a public health challenge that causes immeasurable pain among individuals, families, communities across the country. Whereas connecting veterans and first responders with each other, with civilians and with their communities through a range of activities, including physical activity, community service, and disaster response efforts, promoting a stronger sense of belonging and purpose. Whereas mental health and crisis support services are critical for people showing signs of suicide risk in their thoughts or behavior, requiring involvement from the broader community to reach veterans where they live and thrive before they reach crisis point. Whereas veterans and their loved ones can call the Veterans Crisis Line at 1-800-273-8255 and press 1, or they can chat online at veteranscrisisline.net, or send a text message to 838-255 to receive free confidential support 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Whereas if you or someone you know is in an emergency, call 911 immediately, or if you're in a crisis or experiencing difficult suicidal thoughts, call the National Suicide Hotline at 1-800-273-8255. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jackie Warner, Mayor of the Town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Town of Hope Mills, encouraging all citizens to look out for their family, friends, and neighbors, and urging those who are experiencing a crisis to seek help. Next, we have an update on the John W. Hodges Public Safety Building.
Good evening. Give you a quick update where we are with the John W. Hodges Public Safety Building project. Right now, we're in the midst of getting quotes for the temporary police station. We sent out RFPs for build design and those bids are due back by Monday, August 26th. So once we get those bids in, we'll be selecting a designer and architect and then the construction company is gonna be doing the renovations. So we'll know an amount at that point. And then, once we receive those bids, we'll bring them back to the council for approval. As you know, we've already secured the lease for the building for three years. And one of the things that we did find out in my last meeting with USDA, and I'll get into the USDA loan update, is we were planning, as far as the budget was concerned, to cover the renovation costs to the old Ace Hardware building through the construction financing through USDA. They're not gonna be able to do that unless we use the same contractor for the renovations as we do to build the building. So we don't know who's gonna be building the building at this point and also at this point, not who's gonna bid on that. So instead of having that tied down, we're gonna separate, have to separate that out from the construction loan and pay for it through our regular general fund budget. So we'll be doing a budget amendment later, once we know the amount and that sort of thing. But the trade-off is going to be that the lease for the Ace Hardware building, that can be covered by the loan. So we're just gonna flop the two. So, but the construction will probably be more than the annual lease because we're leasing it for three years. The entire three-year lease can be covered under the loan, but the construction costs are not going to be at this time. So once we know what that amount is, I'll be bringing a budget amendment at a later date to cover that. The process for the USDA loan, we're looking for submission of the, all the loan applica... the application has been sent in, but the final submittal of all the information that has to go in with it, we're shooting for October of this year to have everything in for that submittal. There's a lot of different things that have to be done for this. I think at the last meeting, you approved a feasibility study contract. We have to do a Phase 1 environmental on the property. There's several different things that we're in the midst of doing for this loan. Each of them have a different cost and a different thing allocated to it. All of that, though, is reimbursable when we do get the loan. So we're doing all those things. Once we have approval from USDA, they do not do construction loans. I've mentioned to this before, we'll have to do a short-term loan, a short-term financing with the bank. They'll be during the construction period. We'll draw it down as we do construction and then, once the construction is finished, then we take that and transfer it into the USDA loan, which at this time, we're looking at 35 years. And we did have a quote of four and a quarter percent for that loan. If we can get this thing in in October, we can probably get three and a half percent. So that difference in just interest savings, not necessarily savings, but it allows our borrowing capacity adds about another million dollars of what we can borrow for the same amount of money, just by dropping that interest rate. So we're shooting for that. Let's see, what else have I got? I think that's it for the USDA process. The project budget, I'm trying to get this budget as low as possible. We're finalizing the construction budget now. Myself and the architect have really been working on this a lot lately. The construction cost as it stands right now, the estimate, is $12,885,500. That's just construction for the building itself. That's not the entire project. When you add in all the site work, the USDA requirements, architect fees, engineering testing, IT design, audiovisual, internal design, all the furniture in the building, the security and the 5% contingency, right now, we're looking at about a $16 million total project. I know that's a lot, but we're getting something really nice out of it and I'm still trying to get that cost down. So we originally were looking at probably around, I think the estimates, before we got into it, larger was around 12 million and we were looking at doing like a 25 or 30-year loan. But since the amount's gone up, based on the projections, we're looking at possibly doing a 35-year loan. And then, of course, with it dropping from four and a quarter to three and a half percent, that's gonna help out a lot. And it's gonna keep the payments about the same amount that we were estimating before. Just be a longer duration. That's the budget. The timeline, we should have construction drones completed November, December of this year, somewhere in that timeframe. Then we would do project bids, probably December, January, and then go into construction, possibly to begin sometime January or February. And then, if it takes 18 months to construct, we're looking at a finished project June or July of 2021. And as far as timeline for the police department moving into their temporary facility, they're wanting to be in probably November, December of this year to be in the new facility. So that's the update where we're at so far and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Leg.
Has the fiber optic cable been completed?
Yes, the fiber optic line that connects the police department to the county.
Right.
Or the sheriff's office, that has already been installed in the, what was the old hardware building.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Drew, remind me, what was the proposed payment, monthly payment that we're trying to stay close to?
The original amount, when we were doing the 12 million at 25 years, was about 717,000 a year.
For how many years?
Yes. If I can, if I get it to 15 million for the 35 years at three and a half percent, that'll be 750,000 a year. So not much more than the 717 I had originally planned on.
750,000 for 35 years. Okay.
That's if we get 15. That's if it's 15, you said.
That's if it's 15 million.
But you're projecting 16.
Yeah. I had done a calculation at 16. I'm still trying to work on that amount. Still trying to get it lower.
And the lease reimbursement...
But it all depends on the, excuse, it all depends on the bids, too.
Well, yeah.
So this is just all estimates that we're working with right now, so.
Who, Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem Mitchell?
The lease reimbursement, are those gonna be added to the proceeds on the loan, you said, on the USDA loan?
The reimbursements.
The Ace Hardware building? You said we can recover that to the, to the USDA?
Yes, what we'll do is, and that's really more of a budgetary issue, is anything that's gonna be in this project budget, we're gonna set up a capital project fund once we get the final numbers and then everything's gonna go through that and everything in that project fund's gonna be covered by this loan. So as far as like the construction loan, when we secure that with the bank during construction, there's gonna be interest charged on that loan, but we're only gonna draw down the funds as we spend them. So we won't be paying interest on the full amount. We'll only pay, pay an interest on what we've drawn down up to that date. And then, at the end of that loan, it'll be paid off through the USDA loan and then that picks up the amortization for the 35 years ongoing.
So you're including the lease in the ultimate borrowing?
We're gonna put the lease into the project fund and then the renovation cost will have to come out of the general fund budget.
From 16 million, you covered that or 16.5?
The total project budget's still 16, yeah.
It's at 16.
Ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have any questions?
No, I have none, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Larson?
I have one. What's the game plan if it comes back higher than 16?
We may have to go back to the drawing board and do some value engineering or, you know, find some more ways to cut some costs.
Now, Commissioner Leg, you have something else?
Yes. Is the plan for the renovation of the Hardware Store, police station, is that gonna be all portable stuff in there so that we can remove it and not have a lot of damage?
We're gonna do as much of that as possible by way of the, some of the furnishings, some cubicles and that sort of thing. But being that it's a police station, there have to be some, certain rooms of the station have to be secure in a certain way. So they have to be actually walls built and, you know, under lock and key and housed a certain way with an actual, you know, enclosed roof, that sort of thing to prevent access. So, you know, we have to do those things.
They have a room in the, when you walk in, the left back corner, they have a pretty good-sized room back there that was the owner's office. I would hate to see us spend more money in there and have to leave something there.
Right.
Than to have portable walls and things that we can remove. And I don't think we can do anything permanent without the permission of the owner again.
We've been in constant contact with the owners. Actually, the chief and I met with them last, it was either Tuesday or Wednesday of last week and did, you know, another walk-through of the building, showing them, here's the plans that we have, here's what we're looking at doing, and they're perfectly fine with where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? And at any time, you can call myself or Melissa for any questions that you have about the project, but we're, we're moving along and it's gonna be a great project.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Next, we have our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. The update on the Rockfish Road sidewalk project, a meeting was held today, Monday, August 19th, with representatives of McGill Associates, Charles Hughes Construction, and NCDOT. McGill and Associates is working with the contractor to rewrite the change order, which will be validated by NCDOT. McGill is working on the scheduling and traffic control plan, which must be reviewed and approved by NCDOT. Fountain Lane House, we are still awaiting a response from the notification of demolition from the state DHHS before proceeding with obtaining bids for demolition. Trade Street Museum update, excuse me. A drawing has been completed in order to make the building ADA compliant and has been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. The next step in complete, is completing a request for proposals and then to obtain proposals. I have identified this project as a top priority moving forward this budget year. Now that the Public Works Department has a deputy public works director, it will remove some of the burden from public works director Don Sisko and things should be able to move a little more expeditiously on this project. Maintenance for the Episcopal Church property. Public Works has removed some limbs from some of the trees around the property and has removed a tree directly next to the parish house that has been causing some damage. Scan Electric conducted an inspection of the electrical components of the Episcopal Church on Thursday, August 8th, in order to have the electricity turned on. This is required when a property has had power off for more than six months. There are a number of items identified by Scan Electric that will need to be completed before electricity may be reconnected. Scan Electric has submitted a proposal for the required work and we are in the process of obtaining another quote. Parish House update. Public Works has completed all demolition requested by Lysic Associates. Mark Blankenship of Lysic Associates will be here tomorrow, Tuesday, August 20th, at 8:30 to meet with Public Works Director Don Sisko to complete the structural inspection of the parish house. Heritage Park Master Plan. The Board of Commissioners accepted the proposal from McAdams for the Heritage Park Master Plan at the Monday, July 15th regular meeting. A public kickoff meeting involving the Historic Preservation Commission, Appearance Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Committee is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, September 26th at 6:00 PM at the Parks and Recreation Center. Currently, the Parks and Recreation Department is creating a flyer for public information and to market this meeting to as many of the citizens as possible. The flyer will be emailed to the Sunshine List, placed on the town's website and social media pages, marquee, as well as placed at different locations around town. Parks and Recreation Director Lamarco Morrison has completed a draft of an RFP to partner with a company that rents canoes, kayaks, and paddle boats to operate at the town lake. We are hoping to place this item on the September 9th, 2019 Agenda for discussion and possible Parks and Recreation staff has sent out a survey to the participants of the 2019 Parks and Recreation Summer Camp Program. The survey results will assist staff in determining the future planning, additions to or adjustments for the program. This is following one of the recommendation, recommended actions within our recently completed Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. The Parks and Recreation staff has prepared a fall sports revenue report. Soccer participation has increased from 321 participants in fiscal year 2018, 2019 to 372 participants for fiscal year 2019, 2020, an increase in revenue of $1,530. Fall baseball has increased from 101 participants to 115 participants, an increase in revenue of $420. Football participation has increased from 82 participants to 98 participants, an increase in revenue of $480. And cheerleading participation has increased from 51 participants to 55 participants, an increase in revenue of $120. The total increase in revenue from fiscal year 2018, 2019 to this year's fall sports is $2,550. We anticipate growth will continue in greater numbers for all sports and programs with the implementation of the online registration later on this year. Town staff clears drains before adverse weather and after heavy rain events to make certain that the roadways stay clear of debris and rainwater. Staff has noticed a tremendous amount of lawn debris entering the roadways. With over 6,000 inlets in town, we would like to request that residents remove their yard debris and dispose of it properly. This debris can create a roadway safety issue and keep drains from flowing freely during rain events. We are in the process of conducting a public awareness campaign. The town maintains drains throughout the year by cleaning the lines, however... This debris can create a roadway safety issue and keep drains from flowing freely during rain events. We are in the process of conducting a public awareness campaign. The town maintains drains throughout the year by cleaning the lines, however, some pipes are smaller sized and take longer to drain. The ADA Transition Program, Stewart Incorporated. Representatives of Stewart have completed their assessments. Public notices have been completed and posted. The public surveys are active on social media and the website, and staff is in the process of completing our self-assessments for facilities and programs, which will be submitted to Stewart. Rockfish and Seawink Collier flooding issue. We have scheduled a follow-up meeting with all parties to discuss the options and see if they have any recommendations, on Thursday, August the 29th, is our meeting. Update on the new phone system. All phones were installed on Wednesday, August the 14th, and we went live with the new system on Thursday, August 15th. The new carpet for town hall is scheduled to be installed over the Labor Day holiday. Due to the potential issues with having staff and public in the building while the carpet is being taken up, and new carpet installed, which will begin on Friday, August 30th, the town hall only will be closed for business that day, Friday, August the 30th. The Public Works Department, Fire Department, Police Department, and Parks and Recreation Department will all remain open on Friday, August 30th. Notices will be posted tomorrow, Tuesday, August the 20th, to our social media pages, website, and on the building, so that the public will be, be made aware of this closing. A meeting was held on Thursday, August the 15th, with Grace Lawrence and other representatives from the Rural Planning Center Division of North Carolina Department of Commerce, and included staff, Mayor Warner, Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell, as well as members from FCEDC, Cumberland County Planning Staff, and Ms. Pat Hall as the representative of the Joint Planning Board. The next steps in the process will be, the Rural Planning Center will send the town a memorandum of understanding and a resolution of support to approve and adopt. Representatives will schedule a tour of the focus areas to take place in September. And the first initial meeting of the working group will take place in October. The purpose of the first initial meeting is an introduction to the process and general outline, outline of the process and the plan. More specifically, to define the areas, plan objectives, a mission statement, and begin discussion of land use categories. Sidewalks and mother-in-law suites. Staff is currently working with Cumberland County staff to draft language to address redundant sidewalk regulations in residential subdivisions, as well as how to address mother-in-law suites in the zoning code. Code enforcement. Staff contacted several businesses in Hope Mills over the past few days to notify them of code enforcement violations tied to flag signs and outdoor displays, and are working with business owners to come into compliance. A recent code violation off of LaBonte Drive for a fence that was installed without a permit was brought into compliance when the homeowner was approved for a zoning and a building permit. Political campaign signs. Staff issued the explanation of political campaign signs to all candidates for the upcoming election cycle that provides information on the placement of campaign signs within the town of Hope Mills limits on Friday, August the 16th. NCDOT grant. Staff has submitted the grant application for the NCDOT Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant for the Fall 2019 Cycle. The grant is an 80/20 match, and is, is a request to facilitate funds for a planning study for pedestrian connectivity throughout the town of Hope Mills. FAMPO Grant. Staff is also gearing up for the submission of the annual FAMPO Transportation Alternatives Grant for sidewalks. This is the grant that has produced the Rockfish Road, Johnson Street, and Main Street across from the lake sidewalk projects. Staff will coordinate with Public Works to determine the location of the next sidewalk project when, when the application period opens within a few months. The recently awarded grant across from Hope Mills Lake is for a total of $445,540, and includes the installation of a new, of new sidewalks along the southwest side of North Main Street, across from the lake, from the intersection of Johnson Street and Fountain Lane and Main, and the intersection of Trade Street, Lakeview Road, and Main. The installation of a new crosswalk at the intersection of Johnson Street and Fountain Lane and Main Street. Full pedestrian upgrades at the intersection of Trade Street, Lakeview Road, and Main Street, including crosswalks, pedestrian signalization, and stoplights. A raised mid-block pedestrian crosswalk is also included in the grant proposal. Last week was the official launch of the Hartzog Law Group. Congratulations to our attorney, Dan Hartzog Jr. On Friday, August the 16th, 2019, Best Lawyers in America recognized Hartzog Law, Hartzog Law Group attorneys for their accomplishments. Best Lawyers selects its recipients based on an exhaustive peer review study, and has become recognized as, as the definitive guide to legal excellence. Dan Hartzog Jr. was recognized by Best Lawyers in the field of municipal law. On August 3rd, 2019, Dan Hartzog Jr. was elected to serve on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorneys. The Association seeks to encourage cooperation among municipal attorneys, provide opportunities to exchange information and experiences, and keep members informed on current issues and developments in municipal law. And I believe that concludes my update, my manager's report.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on our agenda is public hearings, and this is case number P-19-34, rezoning of 1.38 plus or minus acres from R6A Residential to CP Planned Commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district. It's located in the northeastern quadrant of the intersection of Service Road 1138, which is Appleberry Lane, and Service Road 1141, Comwin Road. It's submitted by Roy and William Player on behalf of Mary Lane Player Estate. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Board Members. As stated, this is case P-19-34, a rezoning request from R6A to CP. Um, the subject properties exist as three parcels that comprise a total of 1.3 acres of land located the northeastern intersection of Cumberland Road and Appleberry Lane. The assemblies of the three combined lots front 102 feet along the northern side of Cumberland Road and 229 feet along the eastern side of Appleberry Lane. The parcels are developed with residential structures and are developed or designed under, designated under R6A Residential Districts. The area to the immediate north and south are zoned under CP, with R6A zoning properties adjacent to the east and west. The north and western boundaries of the tracks are the limits of the town of Hope Mills with adjacent land to the south and east located inside the town limits. The, this portion of Cumberland Road is considered to be a commercial corridor with the area along Appleberry Lane developed with residential uses. As you can see, as stated above, um, this is your zoning, the subject property is outlined in red. Um, Cumberland and Hope Mills Road is a major commercial corridor, but you, there are some R6A, um, zone properties, um, surrounding the, um, to the subject property. To the immediate west, there is an apartment complex along Appleberry Lane. Um, in terms of our MIA, everything you see in yellow is located inside town limits, so as you can see, this property, these three properties are located in the limits, but everything to the north, immediate south, and west is considered our MIA. And in terms of the surrounding zoning, as such, the land uses, um, reflect the zoning makeup, so you have, like I said, some apartment complexes along, um, Appleberry, but this is mainly a commercial corridor. This is an aerial view of the subject property, it's outlined in white. Um, in terms of existing soils, um, there are no hydroic or hydroic inclusion soils in the, in the immediate surrounding area. Water and sewer is available to the subject property. And these are your site photographs. This is a view of the subject property, um, along Cumberland. This is a view, um, northeast view along Cumberland, subject property is to the left side of the screen. This is a view across the street from the subject property on Cumberland. This is a southwest view along Cumberland, subject property is to the right side of the screen. This is a view of the subject property off of Appleberry Lane. Another view of the subject property off of Appleberry. This is an east view along Appleberry Lane. This is a southwest view. This is northwest still on Appleberry Lane. And in terms of the land use compliance, the southwest, um, Cumberland Land Use Plan calls for heavy commercial, and the 2030 Growth Vision Plan, um, calls for urban for this development, for this subject property, and staff recommendation is for approval. And the approval that was granted for, or at least the recommendation from Cumberland County Joint Planning Board on July 16th is for approval as well, and the motion is in your packets. I'd like to open up the floor and any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions before we have the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no questions. Then I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning, if you would come to the microphone at this time?
My name is Roy Player, I'm at 2811 South Wind Circle, Sevierville, Tennessee. This is my brother William, he lives here in the Fayetteville area. Want to give your address, stuffy? We, uh, have been on that property since 1964, long time. Our mother passed away, uh, February 20th, 2017, we took over the property. We've been there a long time, we want to see the community grow. We want to see our property put to good use. That's what our mother and father wanted, that's what we want for the community. Uh, I think that, uh, with the right planning, and you guys is God, I believe that we could make that area a lot better than what it is. Cumberland Hope Mills Road's always had a bad reputation, I'd like to see that come up, that is my home, that's my brother's home. I would hope that you guys would consider this, um, due to the fact that we, uh, were born and raised here in Hope Mills and Fayetteville. Fayetteville's came a long ways, but we got a long ways to go too. That's basically all I have to say about it, I would, I'll, again, we would like to see Fayetteville grow and Hope Mills grow to make it the place that it should be. That's all that I got to say.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Could you speak up to the, go up to the microphone, please?
Basically, I was gonna pretty much say the same thing that he just said. Um, the, the biggest thing is, is the Cumberland Road section from Appleberry Lane down to Hope Mills Road, 90% of that is already, um, commercial property, as well as the corner lot there of Appleberry and Cumberland Road and the land beside of us, if we get this passed on, they're gonna come in front of you as well, try to get that commercial as well, so. Just like to see it put to good use, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Are there others that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Uh, my name is Albert Norton, I live at 2936 George Owen Road, uh, just outside of the town limits. I do not live in the town, uh, but, but I've always looked at this town as being part of my home. I personally own property behind Circle K Restaurant, I mean, Circle K Restaurant, gas station, uh, grocery store over at the corner of Hope Mills Road and Cumberland Road. I have, uh, 13 acres behind there, that's been, uh, five acres is in the town of Hope Mills, and seven acres is in the county. The county has, uh, given us commercial zoning on that piece, and that piece abuts to Mr. Player's property. And due to the fact that the, uh, the county has also indicated that it's in the 20-year plan for it to be commercialized heavy anyway, uh, I would think that it would be a positive direction to go ahead and go to the commercial zoning. The reason I mentioned my property is because my property was denied. Uh, and it's my understanding, I was not here that night, but it's my understanding that it was denied on the reason that we did not have a plan to develop the property. Well, Cumberland is outside of Hope Mills, and it's always been a fairly poor area. Uh, I've came from a, a father who was alcoholic, a mother who did not work, five brothers and sisters, I was the oldest, I had to grow up at 11, go to work at the grocery store, add groceries, produce, meats, so on and so forth. Worked two jobs through high school, and had a third one as a senior. Because that's what it took to feed my family, and I, brothers and sisters, mother and father, down in Cumberland, because we were a poor area, and we're still relatively poor. We do not think that, uh, or I do not think personally that it would be a good idea for the town to deny us reasonable, uh, changes to our property's zoning to commercial, due to the fact that it brings a higher dollar value on the market, and it makes it more appealing for us to be able to sell. Uh, my property is not up tonight, uh, don't know when it'll go back up again, or if it even will. Uh, I'd love to see, uh, Mr. Players, uh, and the Player family's property rezoned to commercial, and, uh, the board consider, uh, backdating and rezoning mine, so I don't have to spend another hundred dollars, or whatever the amount was I spent. But, uh, uh, an understanding that the reason that, like I say, that, uh, thought that I was denied is because of no plan, uh, even if the, uh, property is rezoned commercial, this board still controls the plan as, as it's developed and brought forward for permitting and approval. So there's no way that you're losing control, and, and the people who, who are the most experienced, in my opinion, is our land use and zoning, and zoning board committees downtown who make these recommendations. And, uh, whenever the board chooses to go against these recommendations at times, they're also taking money out of the town coffers, and the citizens of Hope Mills should be somewhat concerned about that. Uh, my property has sit there zone, uh, cut in half, I saw it up there on the drawing earlier. It's got commercial to the left of me, and commercial to the right of me, and commercial in front of me, and commercial behind me, but my piece in town, in the town of Hope Mills is residential. For the last year, if you had approved my property last year, I would have been paying commercial taxes, which would have been putting more money into the town's coffers. Now I have a residential piece of property sitting right up off of John Smith Road, and people live in it, it is a house, but I'm being, I was forced to pay taxes there. I didn't ask to be rezoned commercial, the town just rezoned me commercial. And there I have a residence that has to pay town taxes. So it kinda don't really make a whole lot of sense, uh, in one, one respect. I do have the utmost respect for the mayor and the board. I understand your job is a tough one, and you have to make a lot of, of, uh, decisions that weigh heavily on the future of this town. And I do appreciate your time and for listening, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this? Are those that would like to speak against this rezoning, are there any? Seeing and hearing known, would I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Thank you, sirs, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. McLaughlin.
All right, um, if there are no, uh, further questions, I mean, um, like I said, the, uh, motion, um, is in your packets for, um, that was actually recommended for approval as well by the Joint Planning Board. as well by the Joint Planning Board.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
If this passes tonight, what would the procedure be to bring Mr. Norton's property back up? Do we have to start all over again, or can we go back and pick it up?
The property that he's talking about that was denied, typically, I think he was trying to engage you guys right after that denial to see if you would reconsider. The zoning laws require that it can't be reconsidered within a whole year. I do think that year has passed. So, I do think if he wants to actually reconsider, he can just refile to get it rezoned again. But I think that...
Is he being correct that can't be other, the losing side asked to bring it back? It was denied December 2017, but if he holds it long, he could request to bring it back.
I suppose, I would need to double check, but I think that's correct.
Yeah. And the reason why I say that is because he was engaging the board, and I don't think he got anywhere with it. So, being that that December 17th denial has already passed, even if someone on the losing side wasn't one to, he could actually just refile it. But what she's saying is correct. That would be the procedure if he wants to actually have it considered again.
Is that something we can possibly move forward with? Or we have to start all over? I'm trying to find out.
We can work with the county and talk to the town attorney's seat. Yes, that is correct.
And it was a three-two vote, I think Commissioner Edwards and I, whichever way it was voted, they were voting for the commercial.
They're paying for it.
Yeah. For one, for commercial.
So, if they were on the other side and wanted to bring it back up, you could do it that way. Or they could resubmit.
If they're on the other side, they have to bring it back. All right.
I think the...
I think, I think someone, not the prevailing side, the other side would have to bring it back, if he wants to have it done without him having to refile.
Can we do that now? Or do we have to do it at a different time?
Yeah, we have most of them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If there's no objections or anything, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and approve.
And you have to read the motion that's in the packet. You got the motion?
You got it?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve case P-19, page 34, the town of Hope Mills. Board of Commissioners approves rezoning from R-6A residential to CP plan commercial, and find the request is consistent with the adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan for 2014, which calls for heavy commercial. At this location, CP plan commercial is designated as a heavy commercial district. And further find the approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the district requested is in harmony with the surrounding zoning and existing land uses, and may provide further access to the large adjacent CP zone tract to the month.
I have a motion. Do we have any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. And it would be a member of the prevailing side that would have to bring it back. So, it'd have to be one of the three that actually made the motion to deny it. One of those would have to bring it back to, for it to be reconsidered.
And I think we're just saying for it to be reconsidered without him having to refile.
Right, without him having to refile.
Do we make that motion now, Mayor?
I think Commissioner Legg's asking, can we do that tonight? I'm not sure.
Yes, sir.
If it's permissible, I would like to make a motion that we bring Mr. Norton's property behind the Circle K down there back up for reconsideration.
We have to, would have to have the actual case number and the information in order for you to proceed, but you can...
I think if the board voted tonight to reconsider, we could put it...
Yeah.
No next agenda.
Yeah.
So, just make a motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider that with the addition of the case number being presented.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to reconsider the Norton policy, property. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, and then if we can get that information on the September 9th agenda, is that the next meeting? Okay. And Mr. Norton will...
P-1745 was the case number spoken into the record.
All right, so we'll have that back, have our hearing and everything on. Do I have to have another hearing, really, do we? Do we have to have another hearing? Can we just make the, just put it back on the agenda, or do we have to have a hearing?
I suppose we've already had a hearing on it.
We can work through that with the county.
Okay, you work through that. Okay.
We'll take a look at it and bring it in.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
May I ask, is that case number again?
P-1745.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have public comments, and we have with us this evening for public comments, Beth Cooper.
Elizabeth Mary Haas Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina. But I am in Hope Mills, and I go by Beth Cooper. Basically, I'm a little concerned about some of the things I've seen in the media recently, social media and in the news, in which members of the board have appeared to be blaming the mayor for delays that happened in regards to some of the projects that have been going around and around for quite some time. And it bothers me because this is social media, okay? This is you grandstanding and not bringing it up in a, in a way in which the mayor can defend herself. So, I'm here to put it on the record for the citizens that in the past year, I've watched this board remove and curtail any power that the mayor has to move anything along. So, to blame her for delays is hypocritical to the extreme. How you can get on social media and in newspapers and paint her as the one who's making the delays when you have removed any power she has to get anything done? How can you do that? And I'm, I'm very discouraged that you, on one hand, you talk about how you work together, and everything is, you know, you're going to be a team, and then you get in social media and in the news and blame the mayor for everything. How is that working together as a team?
Next, we have consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like to move in new business, we may do so. Consideration of approval of regular meeting minutes from August the 5th, 2019. Consideration of approval of Parks and Recreation Senior Staff Lamarka Morrison, Stephen Kessinger, and Ann Ivanko attending the 2019 North Carolina/South Carolina Recreation and Park Association NCRPA Joint Conference in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, cost is $1,729.78 and is currently budgeted. Consideration of approval of Ernie Fisher DBA Southeastern Athletic Officials Association contract for 2019-2020 to provide athletic officials. Funding was approved in the 2019-2020 fiscal budget. Consideration of a third-party encroachment agreement for sidewalks tied to proposed Chick-fil-A and acceptance of the July 2019 financial statements. To have a motion to pursue, to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion.
Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have under old business, an update from police chief regarding a traffic speed study for Thoroughbred Trail and Jockey Whip Lane and Steeplechase subdivision.
I'll handle this unless you have further questions of the chief. But at the last, at the August 5th regular board meeting, the board voted to table this item until tonight, August 19th regular meeting, in order for the police chief to gather further information, and specifically, the length of the street was requested. Installation of additional signage, which is already in progress, was one of our recommended actions. And the recorded data does not meet the minimum threshold of guidelines for installation of speed calming devices. Therefore, we are not recommending going against our own policy. Attached is the email that outlines the specific information from Police Chief Ochardo, and then the speed hump policy. Are there any questions for the chief, or any questions on any of the data that's provided?
Okay, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, next, we have discussion and consideration moving forward with the driveway permit and parking lot with a survey on the golf course property, along with an engineered design to be submitted to NC DOT with a cap of $25,000, and that would be for the design, correct?
The cap was, I believe, the motion read, to negotiate and execute a contract to engage an engineer to design a site plan, including a parking lot for NC DOT review and approval for a driveway permit with a survey on the golf course, along with an engineered design to be submitted. So, I believe that included the survey.
Okay, and so that would be, that was what was approved February 18th, 2019 meeting?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
And that would not include the cost of those, just to get a site plan for it?
Correct.
So, it would have to go out for bid? Okay? All right, I guess...
And, well, I'll take over, unless you have, unless you have questions that I can't answer. But, so, I have given you all a proposed, a map that has the proposed location of the temporary driveway and the parking lot, and then also, it includes an area where we would install crush and run to our building from the cart path. And DOT has indicated that anywhere in this area is good with them. So, this, this particular spot was identified as the flattest area that would require the least amount of earth and work, or any, you know, any sort of grading, and the best line of sight in both directions, and also, the least amount of water runoff.
And how is that, as far as in our comprehensive park and rec plan for the golf course, does that driveway fit into that plan? Is it in one of the locations where they recommend a driveway in that plan?
This is a temporary driveway, so if we put it in and we want it to become permanent, I think that we can probably work with that, with that plan, within that plan. I think they were proposing, Drew, do you remember, it was further down Golf View?
At original?
It was further down Golf View, but there was one up in this area that we were proposing. May not be the exact location, but it was in, I believe it was in this general area.
Madam Mayor? Discussion, yes, ma'am?
I'd like to make a recommendation. I know we've been discussing this on and off for a while. Even though it still may, it still may be temporary, we only have about five more meetings after tonight before we have a new election, and based on what happened two years ago, when the previous board had plans and all, and they were written up, and we had to change them, and it created more income for the town. There's nothing saying that this new board coming up might not like this one. So, I can't see spending $25,000 or spending any more money until we have a new election.
And I totally respect all of your opinions, but we do have to think about the fact that we have a building located on that property.
I realize.
And there's a very large possibility that we may not be granted access to that building going forward in the future.
That's a possibility, based on $25,000. I mean, so, you're going to go by a possibility, or you're going to spend $25,000?
Madam Mayor?
It's up to the board.
This has already been voted, the 25 has already been voted on. That was four to one back in February. Correct.
There was a motion.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, there was a lot of back and forth with, you know, the, the possibility of being able to use the parking lot that is not owned by the town, so...
How long do you think it will take for us to acquire this plan?
I have no idea.
That's, I know what's been happening with any site plan or any kind of plan that we get, it's not something, and you've got Labor Day holiday coming up.
Yeah.
So, my thoughts are, when will this plan come back? And then, when it comes back, it'll be obligating the next board to pay for it, because it's non-funded. It's not in this year's budget, unless we take it out of some other fund. And so, that's my concern, is I don't know how expensive it will be, but I know that it's going to cost money. And would it not be better and wise and prudent to, if we didn't budget? We budgeted $25,000 for a site plan, or an engineered plan, but we did not budget any other funds. But it's the will of the board, so...
Yeah.
Other concerns or considerations that, comments, anybody else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're just in the process of going backwards. If we don't approve this plan, because of the possibility that we may not be able to get to our building there, that we have stuff stored in. I'd like to see us move forward, and I'll put that in form of a motion that we approve this plan for the temporary driveway in interest to the golf course, while we have blessings of DOT and the permits and everything. I understand what Ms. Ed was just talking about, and I don't think anyone on a new board would not want to move forward with the golf course property. So, we've got to start somewhere, so I'll put that in form of a motion that we approve it.
Madam Mayor, I have one more thing. I, I think it's important also for the town to, to consider the fact that Rockfish Road is going to be under construction for, between our public safety building and the, then the sidewalk. Then the sidewalk's going to be taken up, and the road's going to be widened. We're going to have two turn circles being put in. The walking track is one of those things that is widely used all year round by the citizens of Hope Mills, and this does give them an option to go somewhere else and have green space and go walking, instead of trying to fight turn circles and construction, which we know will take several years between the widening and the public safety building. It just seems logical to do this, because even with the master park plan, those are just not financially feasible at this time, or even within the near future to be doing some of these big projects.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We budgeted a fair amount of money to secure that building on the golf course that had been sitting there for years, until recently, the break-ins. Now, with that said, why would we budget money to secure a building we have no access to get to? Why would we do that? We have no access to get to that building, not the town's access. Why would we do that?
One question I would ask, because I know that that building was built by the previous owner of the thirty acres. He built that on our property. Was there not something that we got saying we had an easement to that building? I believe that was under the consideration when Mr. Wilson, we met with him, was that we would have, would have access to it, because really, realization was that the building was ours and not his. That building didn't cost us anything when we got it. It was just an unfortunate mistake on their part of building it on our property. But I do believe there was something, and I don't know if you could verify that there wasn't something that was put in, in that agreement when we lost, when we gave up the lease of the land?
Yeah. I'm not aware... Well, I'm not aware of anything, but we can certainly research it.
Yeah.
And look.
Madam Mayor, I think that has been researched. I know it's been talked about, but I come back to my original thought.
Okay, we've got, okay, we've got a motion on the floor, so all those in favor?
I think it's...
Okay, go ahead. You want to speak more?
Sure.
Okay.
I've been promising my constituents since two thousand and fifteen to open this up as a green space. It's nothing new. This is four years later, and I made the motion for us to walk the properties, the three properties, and then Commissioner Larson made the motion to open it up by April thirtieth, which didn't happen, of course. So I am in favor of at least getting a start for something for our citizens to enjoy beyond the ones that live adjacent to the property. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and that motion would be that we move forward with getting the driveway permit and parking lot survey and engineered design. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, be four to one. Okay, next, we have new business, and this is a non-public hearing item, case number nineteen dash zero eight zero. Consideration of the Thomas Fildesi Property C-three Site Plan Review, Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance Zone C-three, acreage one point fifteen acres plus or minus, located at twenty-seven twenty-seven and twenty-seven thirty-one, Hope Mills Road, North Carolina Highway fifty-nine, submitted by Thomas Fildesi and George Rose, engineer. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
As stated by Madam Mayor, this is case nineteen dash oh eight oh. Subject property is a one point one five acre tract addressed to twenty-seven twenty-seven and twenty-seven thirty-one Hope Mills Road, and developed with the existing Cape Fear Flooring Establishment. And it's also an existing thirteen hundred square foot, one-story frame vacant commercial structure also on that property. The one-story structure is the prop, is the one addressed at twenty-seven thirty-one Hope Mills Road, and with the recently new construct that Cape Fear Floor building addressed at the twenty-seven twenty-seven. Access to the site is located off of the eastern side of Hope Mills Road with eleven available parking spaces and an existing asphalt parking lot at the vacant one-story frame structure. The site is regulated under CP Planned Commercial Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to utilize this vacant one-story commercial structure on the existing Cape Fear Floor site for motor vehicle sales, office space for equipment rentals, and a thrift store. The applicant previously received an approval for this same request on the adjacent property owns at twenty-seven thirty-five Hope Mills Road, but he never moved forward with that request. So he's basically making the same request on the vacant one-story structure on the same side as the Cape Fear Flooring Development. The era photograph here shows the subject property in white. I basically just went through all of that. That's the background information. And this is the site plan. This is the Cape Fear Flooring new building, and this is the one-story existing structure that they'll be utilizing. They are not proposing any construction on the exterior. It's just them basically going in and utilizing the interior portions of the building. That's it.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve case number nineteen zero eight zero. Consideration of the Thomas Folds Property C-three Site Plan Review, Hope Mills Zoning Ordinance Zone C-three, acreage one point one five acres plus or minus, located at two-seven two-seven and two-seven thirty-one Hope Mills Road, Highway fifty-nine, as submitted by the owner and the engineer.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have staff comments. I'll start from Ms. Starling.
Next week, we are all being asked to clean out our offices, and you all have a, in, clean out our offices in preparation for the carpet installation, so emptying cabinets and that sort of thing. You all have a file cabinet back in your room. I'm pointing the wrong direction out here. Is it okay with everyone if I clean that out for you, or do you prefer to go through your drawer individually? I know some of them don't even have anything in them, so I'm willing to do whatever.
Madam, Madam Mayor, ma'am. It's just a cabinet with slide drawers in it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right, Mr. Bellflowers, and I cleaned ours out a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the mail, I'm talking about the big filing cabinet.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Are we going to put it back in there when it's done, or what's going to?
Yes.
Will it be where we can have access to it during the construction, or during the carpet change?
It's just four days, and the building will be closed now.
And then I'll get where you find what I need to do.
Okay. Yeah, your office is going to have to be...
Yes.
...sprinkled out.
It's time, it's time to do some sprinkling, rearranging. All right.
It's a consensus of the board.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Commissioner Legg.
It's consensus of the board, let me move.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hartsuck, anything? Artificial comments? Are there any official comments at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm sorry that I had to miss the other meeting, the last meeting, but I had a real good friend that passed away, been one of my hunting buddies for thirty-some years, and I only found out about it minutes before the meeting. I appreciate your understanding of me not being at that meeting. I know we're not in a church group here, but I know a lot of us are, are believers in the faith of God. Having brother got burnt real bad last week in Ohio, and I made a trip up there to spend with him. They did a procedure on him. He's doing very well. And so, thank you for, for supporting that as well. Like to thank Mr. Hartsuck for all of his work this past week on the, on the sign ordinance for campaigns, and congratulate you on your law office.
Thank you.
I hope I'm not missing anything else. The gentleman that received the awards tonight, congratulations to them. So I appreciate everything you guys do and all your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
I don't have anything, I'm good.
Commissioner, Mayor Pratian?
I just had, well, two items on the stormwater issues. I talked to a lot of citizens, you know, our staff does their best to cover the stormwater drains when it's nice weather and everything, but when these storms crop up and it's, you get continuous rain for several days, our staff just can't keep up. We don't have the, the resources. So, you know, it does take a village. I know our neighbors in our neighborhood, including my household, we get out there and clean that storm drain. After about four hours of a hard rain, you can count on leaves and pine straw covering up the drain and, and creating flooding in your yard. So I'd encourage all the citizens as well. We all have to work together to keep the flooding from occurring. Our staff does do the, I think, the best they can, and, but there's just, we just don't have the, when that kind of storm rolls around, we just don't have the resources. Also, on the planning session, we had a great planning session on the fifteenth, and just to elaborate a little bit, we're just looking at doing some addendums to the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan for our gateways at Exit Forty-One and at least two exchanges on Two ninety-five. And there will be public input sessions on that, and we'd encourage you to come out for those when those do occur. And we're really excited. We've got all the good problems out here in Hope Mills that most towns can only dream of, so we're, we're excited about all the growth that's going to happen out there, but we're trying to get ahead of it so that we can kind of dictate what we want at our gateways a little bit better than what, just take what comes, you know? So just to give you a little bit more information on that planning session. And, and congratulations, Dan, for the award. Very honorable. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Just appreciate everybody who came out tonight, and again, Dan, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And also, just one question is, the added closed session, is that appropriate to do that type of discussion in closed session?
It depends what the discussion is. If it's to consult on, on legal issues, then it is, but...
Okay.
Without knowing what the questions are, I can't...
And normally, we would know what they would like to discuss, and that way you could advise whether or not it is something appropriate.
It's a follow-up to our last closed session. It's a, it takes five minutes. I don't, I certainly would prefer it be talked about out here, but, you know, I'm not the lawyers.
My suggestion would be that if we go back there, it is, I determine that it's not an appropriate topic for closed session. I'm back out.
Okay, all right. So at this time, we would have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Motion to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three three eighteen point one one A-five concerning acquisition of real property, and also to conduct a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A-three to consult with the attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege related to the parking lot at the golf course.
Okay, have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And if you'll beg your patience, we'll be back as quick as we take care of this, and we're going to be meeting in the front conference room. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. You got it.
Oh, okay. Make a motion to move to seal the minutes of the closed sessions until such time as the release of the information. We're no longer frustrated at the purpose of the closed sessions, and further, no action was taken.
Have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming, and we'll see you soon.